Hello and welcome to today's meeting of Democrats of Greater Tucson. My name is Larry Bowden, and I'm the president, and I'll be your host today. Just delighted to see everybody here, particularly our speaker Joyce Jones-Ivy. Joyce, give us a wave, let us.
Thank you, thank you, Larry. You know, there are two things that I wanted to clarify, particularly for those of you that have just joined us. One is I'm not the only Democrat on Oro Valley Town Council. And my topic today is how our citizens impact our local government and what we've made available to them to get their needs across to us so that we know what our constituents are interested in.
We have a couple of announcements to get out of the way, and then we're just dying to hear from you.
Okay.
So let's start out with our membership director, Kathy Ramage White.
Joyce, welcome to the Democrats of Greater Tucson.
Thank you.
And be sure that you invite those other Democrats that are on the Oro Valley Council to join the Democrats of Greater Tucson.
All right.
So this is a direct invitation for you and anyone else that may be listening. By now, we've got over 30 people listening, which is certainly an advantage of Zoom. Be with the right people, folks. Hang out with some good, hard-working Dems and join the DGT if you haven't taken the time yet. But things are going to pick up with the gubernatorial race coming just around the corner. So if you're not yet a member, be sure to sign up. It's easy to do. Back to you, Larry.
And with that, let's turn, let's focus on programs with our program director, Sandy Binion.
And welcome, Joyce. And thank you so much for agreeing to speak when I contacted you. And I do apologize for my misinformation about being the only Democrat on there. So next week, we have Akimi Oyabala, who is the acting mayor, which means assistant mayor, of South Tucson, is going to talk with us about that part of the area. And the following week, we have Kristin Engel, who is the state representative from LD10, and also the first to announce that she's going to run for the CB2 position. Because we look forward to seeing you on those two Mondays also.
Go ahead. Lucy, you're muted, so there we are.
I have a request for state committee persons. If you are interested in signing on in support of an official education council under the Arizona State Party, then I would like for you to email me, and I'll put my email in the chat, because we need a certain number of individuals to sign on, and many already have, but to show support for our public education. So if you're a state committee person and you're interested in having your name added to a list of supporters for the education council under the state party, then please email me. And thank you so much.
And now I'm going to change the topic to something that's a little bit fun. The Democrats of Greater Tucson is going to hold its first happy hour, and we'll turn to our secretary Christina Early. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Hi, everybody. Happy Monday. Thanks for being here, Joyce, and Kathy and Sandy for everything you do for DGT. We appreciate it. So we were talking and just how much we missed being with other Democrats and talking with other Democrats. So we did a little recon. We went down to the Mercado, just west of I-10 on Congress Street. Augustine's Kitchen is there, a local business. We spoke with Neil Scott, who is the general manager, and he has kindly offered to give us their banquet room, which is just off of the patio, and the door is open to the patio, so it's bright, airy. He's giving us the room. It does mean that we will be able to join, have conversation, but when it comes to drinks, drinks and food, we will be our own servers, which is no big deal. I have 35 years in restaurants, so we can probably handle that. But it's just a way to get out and meet, wear a mask if you'd like. They do ask that you wear a mask going into the Mercado, but once you get to your destination, you can take your mask off. They've got food, but they have a happier menu, happier drink specials. We have the room from 3:00 to 5:00. After that, because we don't want to interfere with the kitchen's dinnertime, then we can move out to the patio, into the courtyard there, and continue for another hour for those folks who can't get there early like us retired folks. So we hope that y'all would consider coming. Larry's given you the information there. You can RSVP me. Yeah, we'd just like to get an idea of how many people are coming, and we hope you'll put it on your calendar. We'll probably talk about it again next Monday, but we hope you put it on your calendar, and let's get together and talk some politics. What did we call it, Larry?
Drinking democratically.
There you go. Sorry, my bad.
So mark your calendar. It's Wednesday, May 26th, 3:00 to 6:00. Happy hour drinks and food and snacks, and it's just a wonderful place. It's just west of downtown. This will be our first event in person. And frankly, I would love to talk to some Democrats face-to-face. With that, thanks very much, Christina. Let me introduce our speaker, Joyce Jones-Ivy. Has served on Oro Valley Town Council since 2018. She is a retired nurse who proudly serves patients for 42 years. She grew up in Los Angeles and was one of eight kids. And even from high school, she was politically active, working for candidates in high school. In her career, she's also been a small business owner and a sales and contracts negotiator for the drug maker Borringer Manheim. In other activities, she served on Women in Action, a political action group in Pasadena that assisted candidates to run for office. And she was president of the Pasadena chapter of Jack and Jill of America, which is a mother's organization that studied African-American history and settlements in California. On her official page, it says, "Joyce aims to keep the town community-oriented and fiscally sound and environmentally and financially sustainable. She's in favor of a balanced budget, youth sport, and family activities and wilderness arts." And today, Joyce will speak to us about how to influence your local government. And with that, Joyce, the floor is yours.
As I said earlier, one of my passions as a council member is making sure that we get feedback from our constituents so that I know that we are meeting their needs. And I spend a lot of time doing that, and we have a lot of venues that the town offers. You know, we are only 36 miles. Politics in our community can get very hot sometimes. Right now, we are looking at some of the effects of what happened nationally. But I think the best way for us to deal with that at this point is to get as many people involved in our local government as possible so that we kind of move away from our party affiliations and come to the center of an issue and come together on an issue to try to solve it. And I think local politics really offers an opportunity to do that because, as your council in Tucson, our council is a nonpartisan nomination and appointment. So having said that, I usually, I'm the person, I love to reach out to our community. And as I said earlier, I go and I talk to whoever invites me. I spend more of my scheduled appointment times with HOAs. I don't know how many of you are aware of what's going on with our golf situation, but when I first got in office, one of the things we were dealing with was the fact that we had 49 holes of golf, and that was really the impetus that brought us into office because the community wanted us to solve that issue. And we essentially decided to have 36 holes of golf, and we were going to let a partner that we had partnered with run the nine holes. And as it's turned out, we are right back at the beginning of where we started, and we now are operating 49 holes of golf. And you know, I work really well. If I say something and you have a question about it, please, I won't lose track. Just ask me at that time because I certainly don't mind. So how are the ways that we encourage our community to communicate with us? We ask them to go to our town website. We have Ask Oro Valley, and you can ask any question you'd like. Those questions go to Jessica Hines, who is our constituent services coordinator. And the questions vary from barking dogs to why are we seeing Oro Valley services outside of Oro Valley? Our constituents, as I said, they're very, very involved, they're very concerned, and they're very vigilant, and I like that. We also offer a citizens academy for all people in our community, including our young people, just to give them some background and knowledge about how we operate as a town, who our elected officials are, what the departments are in our town, and how they function. We also have Police Citizens Academy, and it is a 12-week course where you learn everything about our police department, how they function, what their philosophy is on 21st century policing, because that's where we are right now nationally. And the programs that they offer, they offer a lot of programs. And one of the programs that I participated in was self-defense for women. And it was, even at my age, it was very valuable to me because they gave me just things that I could do. You know, at my age, you know, I can't readily run away, even though I'd like to, but you know, but what could I do? You know, I could use my voice. I could kick, I could scream, I could do a lot of things to draw attention to something going wrong with me. And we also have drive-alongs, so if you'd like to drive along, you make an appointment to do that. And that's real important, given the national environment where we are right now and all the attention that policing has gotten. And it just gives you an opportunity for you to know the police officers, but also for the police officers to know you. We have a new chief. This is our first female chief. Her name is Cara Riley. I can tell you, we were ecstatic to have her. This woman, out of 30 candidates who were male, stood heads above all of the male candidates. And it was fortunate that she was one of ours because we didn't have to bring someone in and then have to go through a transition period where they're learning about Oro Valley and policing. And she was recognized, Cara was recognized, Chief Riley, for being one of the top people in law enforcement in Arizona. We also have a drug disposal day and a shredding day here, and I know, yes, I see a handout. Jacqueline.
The general question, I'm sorry to interrupt your flow, however, because we're used to asking at the end. You mentioned getting involved in local politics. Did I hear that right? Helps people get away from the larger divisions in politics, like the opposition of Democratic to Republican? Because I had an instant question about the more involvement in people in the courses, learning about community. Did that seem to you to alleviate the party differences? Because I've heard Oro Valley is very conservative, and that's one of my main concerns in the country, is bringing the temperature down in this division.
When you're focusing on an issue that impacts Republicans and independents, as well as Democrats, to stay focused on the issue, yes, it helps to turn down the heat, it helps to turn down the temperature, and it does bring us together more cohesively. You know, because our focus on, how do we solve the issue? We're trying to decide right now where, how our dollars are going to be spent on our Parks and Recreation Department after doing a two-year assessment. And when we come together, and the community has come together very well on that subject, and we don't do it on a partisan basis at all. And I think that is one of the advantages to being a part of local government, is you're more issue-oriented than you are political party-oriented.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you have personal experience with that, so much of it, but I wanted your opinion. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. The other things that we do is to get our constituents to communicate to us is we have what you all have, you know, the call to audience at the start of our council meetings. And our council meetings are the first and the third Wednesdays of the month. With the pandemic, Zoom has truly increased the number of our community that's involved in our meetings. And sometimes we can have up to 70 people asking us questions before our council meetings, but at least we're getting their input. The other thing that we are very, very involved in is our general plan. And our general plan, we updated it in 2016. And we had committees of people from our community to come in and help put that plan together. And again, it's just a nice way of just, we're all in this together, Republican, Democrat, whatever your affiliation is, but this is the issue. How do we want to see our town? What is it, what kind of lifestyle? What do we want in terms of services in our town? And so that's what I like about being here in our community. But you're right, Jacqueline, there's quite a number of conservative components. There are more Republicans than there are Democrats. But again, we come together on issues and not down party lines. Any other questions as I go?
This is Larry talking. Let me suggest, if you do have a question, simply go to the bottom of your screen and click on the reactions button, and you will see that there's a chance for you to raise your hand, as Barbara Warren has. So Barbara, please go ahead.
Barbara.
Barbara Warren.
Yeah, this is going back a little in your description of the work you've been doing. And I guess I should have raised my hand earlier. I'm wondering how with the golf course that you're expanding, that you're addressing the water conservation areas that we all need to address with the impending water shortages we're going to be facing in Arizona and in the West, and golf courses use a fair amount of water.
Yes, they do. They do. We have two courses that use reclaimed water, and we have the nine course, the Pushtrid course that use potable water. And potable water is drinking water, and it is a little bit more expensive. We plan to remodel that system of watering up there, the watering system, so that we can conserve money on that. We've also, to offset the costs, have gone to our HOAs and asked them to help participate in offsetting the costs of running those golf courses. This is the first time we've ever done that, and they've been very responsive in a very positive way. But you're right, it is a concern. And Peter Abraham, who is our water utility director, does an excellent job on keeping us updated on water use, what we're going to be doing in terms of conservation. We've been extremely successful with water conservation here in Oro Valley. Yes, Lillian?
I was wondering if you're having problems with the anti-maskers at all? And I'm asking because the anti-maskers tried to storm the Vail School Board meeting, and those people were from all over the place. And one of them, who was somebody who lost her race to be on the state legislature as a senator, was busy telling everybody her name and that she was running for senator for LD10. You know, so, yeah, it's pretty blatant stuff. And I just wondered if you're having any problems.
Well, we have not resumed our council meetings in council chambers yet. I have gotten a lot of email from some constituents who just express just an aversion to wearing masks. Unfortunately, because of my background and everything that I did as a nurse practitioner was scientifically based, and I remember when we went through Ebola, I remember swine flu, and so I can, I try my best to help them understand the importance of it. I think this pandemic would have been a little bit different if it had been handled differently on a national level, but it was not. And I think that's where we see a lot of the crazy from, and forgive me for saying crazy, but I just can't think of anything else right now. But a lot of the confusion and the lack of cooperation, I think if we had a president that had rolled this out appropriately, because I remember the other pandemics under other presidents, and we were aware, but you know, CDC was, it was our infectious disease, infection control guru's back then, and everybody listened to them. So we didn't have this kind of madness that went on this time. There are still a lot of people that write me, they don't want to take a vaccine, and that's fine. You know, I'm not opposed to that. That's your individual right. When they send me emails about masking, though, I'm just very honest with them, and the fact that pandemic does not mean that I'm immune to it. It means that there's no immunity, this is something totally new, we've never faced it before, let's do what's smart. Mask. Why not mask? Because we don't know. You could end up being the carrier, you know? And if you're living in a family situation or visiting family, you can be an asymptomatic carrier and take this to someone who's very susceptible to it. So until, and I don't know, and I'm hoping, my desire is at some point with this new administration, we kind of clear out all the misinformation and consistently get the message out about what this pandemic really means. There's variances out there right now that have been showing, rearing their ugly heads in other states. I understand that we have them here. We don't know whether the vaccine that we have is going to even protect us against that. So I'm science-oriented, I can only give you what science tells me, even though you tell me that, you know, I have a right, I have a right. You certainly do. You have a right. But in you expressing your rights, you have to understand whose rights you're impacting because by not wearing a mask, you're going to the hospital. Do they have the right to say, "No, I'm not going to treat you"? No. So we really have to roll back this rights issue into, are we going to be truly a democracy, working with each other? I understand we're a republic as a country, but what is the, just the human kindness issue that, you know, is before us right now? And that's the way I see it, you know? This is a human kindness issue, and we can never, ever forget that. You know, we're in this together as a country. What impacts me impacts you, and we have to become focused on that again.
All right. I believe you're talking to a crowd of Democrats, all of whom have had full vaccinations, so we're with you.
Good, good.
And then seen in the chat from Robert Bulacek. Robert would like to know, how is Oro Valley, oh my gosh, where'd it go? How is Oro Valley doing with adding solar to town facilities and electrifying the town fleet?
We're doing very well with that. We have partnered with Tucson Electric Company, who put solar panels in at Naranja Park and has covered about a third of our parking out there so that as families come in, the cars can stay cool. We welcome it into our town for our homeowners. Everything that we do is a town. We use solar, and I don't know the last time you've ever visited our community, but we have solar panels that control most of our electrical, our town electrical locations. And so that's been a way for us to be able to cut down on our electricity. But we are very pro solar. It's clean energy, it's renewable energy, and we are definitely preaching that.
All right. I've got a question on my own behalf, and that is, I understand Oro Valley has annexed the Outward Look property, and it's now going to be part of Oro Valley, and there's all sorts of developments coming up. Tell us a little bit about that.
We did successfully, we continued going through the paperwork process, but yes, we did successfully annex Westward Look, which for the town is, it's quite an accomplishment. This was actually our third attempt. I can tell you, before we completed the process, and because of the development that's going to be coming out there, we met with a lot of the constituents to hear what their concerns were. I mean, you're now being annexed out of the county, you're going to be annexed into the town, and you're getting development on top of that. So there was a lot of concern about how it was going to impact their lifestyle, how it was going to impact the environment. And so we got the developer involved in that process and had them talk to the community. And I'm happy to say that where we are right now is, the developers have decided to get citizen input on what that development's going to look like. They brought to us three different plans and said that it could be either one of the three plans or a combination thereof, but my concern is that the community is involved, they're helping to make the decisions. It's beautiful out at that resort. I could really relate to their concerns about getting their views blocked, having just an increase in business activity going on, property that has been relative just an increase in business activity going on, property that has been relatively quiet, and the traffic concerns that they've had. And so we will be addressing that. As a part of the annexation, we will be taking care of the roads, that stretch of road from Oracle to the end of the resort. So that will come under our purview. And, you know, we have a road preservation, you have to excuse me, because I've got a lisp that I don't normally have, but I've got one now. But, so, and of course, we don't have property taxes. So it's, we, I feel like it's a win-win for us, because the only way we increase our revenue is by annexation. And so giving back means they won't have property taxes, and we definitely will make sure that the development issues are dealt way, dealt in a manner that they find acceptable.
All right.
Yes, Maureen. Maureen, how are you?
Hello. I'm gonna let Sandy ask the question.
Okay. Hi, Sandy.
Follow up to the annexation, a broader question. We come from an area, the Kansas City area, where when annexations are proposed, it takes a majority vote of the annexer and the annexee. Is that not the situation in Arizona, that the, you know, the bigger party can grab it without the smaller party having a vote on? And in that case, in our area I was referring to, you know, it has to be a majority of both sides have to vote in favor of the annexation. That come into play here at all?
Sandy, it didn't. And because the owner of the property wanted it annexed. And unfortunately, the community did not have the voice that they needed. They just weren't given that voice, say, to be really perfectly honest with you. So the annexation really came about as a result of what the owner and the town of Oro Valley desired. But again, we did not leave out the concerns of the community out there. We wanted to know how they felt about it.
Okay. We have a question from Louise Pate. Go ahead, Louise.
Hi. Thank you for appearing, Ms. Jones-Ivy.
You're welcome.
I am not a resident of Oro Valley, but I have family that live there. And they have often visited before they moved here, the Westwood Look Resort, and they love it. And isn't it one of the first ones that existed here in Tucson? That's one question. Could it have a historical, what do they call it, designation that would preserve some of the ambiance of the resort? And the third question is, what will the noise and lighting have an effect? What, how much will they have an effect when businesses move into the area? So that's three questions.
Three questions. No problem. I do know that it was 1912 when that resort was established. And remind me of what your second question was. I'm sorry.
My second question was, could it be designated a historical landmark?
It definitely could be. We have a historical society made up of citizens in our community, and it certainly can be. And going through that property with the residents, I did not know that Alexander Graham Bell owned property there, and there is still a building there that he resided in. So yes, it certainly can be.
And then the third question is the environmental impact, light and noise. Since we, part of the ambiance of the resort is dark skies, which people there who are staying there can enjoy. But if there's a lot of street lighting in the annexation plan, that will interfere with that. And I'm wondering if mitigation measures will be taken?
Yes, they will. We do have an ordinance for light and what type of light can become a part of that development. So, yes, that will be addressed. Also, the noise in terms of traffic and just the increase influx of people coming into that community to do business. We do have a noise ordinance, and there's just so much noise that a business can make in our community. And we did recently change it, because the decibel level for us was like 40, and we did increase that to 65. And we did it because as we went to different spots in town, and we looked, listened to what the noise level was, it's been higher than 40 than in so many, for so many years, that we didn't have a way to really enforce that. And so we took a look at cities and towns our size and found out what their noise level was, and then just adopted the 65 in. But there, depending on the time of day, of course, the decibel level is adjusted for. Because if it's during nighttime, early morning, and we do have a lot of our citizens who will call us about, you know, the large garbage trucks that are going onto the property and having to pick up the dumpsters. And so we do help them address that with the, with waste management. But yes, to just answer your question, we do have ordinances to, to address those issues.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joyce, I have a quick question for you. It's, once again, it's on politics. As you know, the recall Fincham campaign is about halfway towards its goal of putting this on the ballot. And tempers are getting out of hand. A signature collector was sitting outside the Oro Valley Library, and a man came up and started shouting at her, assaulted her, ripped her petitions in half.
Yes, yes.
He was arrested, and it's coming up for a court hearing. And I just wanted to get your input on the effort to recall Fincham, and, you know, how to deal with these, you know, volatile and aggressive Fincham supporters.
I had heard of that incident. I'm well aware of it. It's unfortunate that it had to happen. I know people can have very strong feelings politically, but it's, it was against the law here in our town, hence the reason why he was arrested. And there will be a trial following that. So I think if we're out there, number one, I never go anywhere just by myself. I think it's important for our citizens who are going to be engaged in that in a public environment, that might draw someone or draw an attack upon them, if they would just let our Oro Valley Police Department aware of the fact that they're going to be in a particular location. And there's not a lot of locations here that you can actually go get signatures. Oro Valley Library is where this took place, and it's right next to our police department. So I think just letting them know that you're out there so that they can have someone constantly coming through and checking on you could be a deterrent.
All right. Barbara Warren has a question. Go ahead with your question, Barbara.
Yeah, thank you. I'm back on the water issue again.
Okay.
I'm also a health professional. I'm very, very concerned about our environment and that the impacts that the drought, upcoming drought will have, that heat and so on and so forth. But with this new development, I'm wondering about another question about water. That is, in Tucson, I believe that any new home that's built is required to have desert landscaping only and no lawns because of the water issue. And is that going to be the case in Oro Valley with the new development as well that's annexing, that they will be required to have desert landscaping to conserve water?
That is one of, one of our policies that our planning and zoning department takes care of. Because you're right, and water is much of a concern. And how many articles do we see in a month's time in the paper? We were made aware the fact that cap is going to be decreased to our town on a tier one level. And forgive me, because I did ask Peter Abraham how much water decrease that would mean for us. And I can't remember how many acre feet that he said, but what we're going to be doing, working with Marana on a project for our northwest reclamation watering center that, and I can't give you a specific date on when that project's going to be completed, but we are addressing that. The other thing that we're doing is conservation. We have a program where, even if, and please forgive my phone ringing, if you suspect there is a leak, or we suspect there's a leak anywhere on your property, we have our utility come out and try to identify it. But yes, Barbara, we live in the desert, and it is, I don't know when, this is not going to ever be a concern for us.
Thank you.
But I encourage all of you, just conservation, conservation. And if you've got grass, please go to a desert landscape. We have had, gone through quite a dry spell for the last few years, and the swirls are blooming, and they are beautiful. So that tells us that things can survive without less water.
Yes.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Yes, Dee?
Hello. Thank you for coming. I was interested. One thing I wanted to say to Larry is thank you so much for your article for Blog for Arizona. It's been a long time since I've felt glee. You did an excellent job with Melvin Halfwitt. So my question is to Oro Valley, or maybe to somebody else, the 17 people who signed that petition, aren't their rights, constitutional rights violated by their signatures being destroyed? Couldn't this be a lot bigger than a disturbance of the peace?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, and I'm going to make inquiry about it.
Thank you. I think we should.
Okay, I will do that, and I'll get the answer back to Larry.
Thank you.
All right. I'll be sure to send that out. And thanks for the kind words about the article about the guy who, you know, attacked a defenseless signature collector. I put a link to the article in the chat.
Good.
So next up, we've got Jackie Romer. Jackie, go right ahead and ask your question.
Thank you. This is a little off the wall, but you know, when golf started in Scotland, it was on a horrible natural environment of bumps and weeds and everything else. Why can't we have a golf course of natural desert groomed vegetation? It would be educational, and it would be, I think it would be more fun than just grass that makes it more easy. What do you think about that?
I'll tell you. When we were trying to make the decision about whether we were going to let our golf courses go back to just natural desert, the uproar was horrific. People love the color of grass. They love the green. And that influences us more than anything else. Do I think it would work? I don't know, because in the game of golf, you need that, that nice smooth surface for the ball to be able to traverse across to the hole. So I'm not real sure, Jacqueline, whether a desert landscape would work for golf. But you know what? That's food for thought.
Someone has to try something, because
I agree.
It's either that or have no water.
I agree with that. I do.
All right. Thanks for listening to that.
You're welcome.
See, we're waiting for questions right now. So Joyce, tell us a little bit about what you're working on now.
Right now, we're working on our budget. And that's always just a very heavy process, I think. Because not only do I feel as an elected representative here in Oro Valley, commitment to my constituents, but also a very strong commitment to make sure that we're not living outside of our means. And so this budget that we're working on currently for '21, '22, it's a little bit more than what we've had. But then there's been some things in there that has influenced it. And I know that one of them is going to be the monies that we're going to be getting from the American Rescue Plan, and the other are the monies that the town received during COVID. And as you know, the federal government has very strict guidelines on what can be done with that money. So making sure that we're following those guidelines. So we're not going to get a request for return of funds is something that is laying heavy on all of our minds right now as we go through this process. As well as, we're very concerned about our PSPRS, which is our law enforcement retirement fund. A few years ago, the state of Arizona, by some equation, mathematical equation, came up with numbers on what each town and city owed to that retirement service. And ours, of course, turned out to be quite a few million dollars. And the problem was every year, when we got our actuaries from the insurance company, those numbers were just going off the wall. So we are really grappling with how to solve it. We're not even, we're almost 60% paid off of that liability. But we're not quite there yet. So trying to make a decision on how we're going to do this. And we're kind of talking about whether we want to bond to get this debt taken care of. So just making sure that we're financially in a good place, and we can pay our bills without a reduction in service. And maintaining that financial safety net that we need to maintain, because things always happen. You know, it's like living in your home. You spring a leak, you didn't plan on that, and it's just about half the house has got to be now taken care of, so there's no mold, you got to remodel, something. So that's, that's what's laying heavy with us right now. And that's what we're working on. How to come up with a realistic budget says, I said, we don't have a property tax. And so the revenues that we get, we try to manage very, very carefully, because the vast majority of our revenues come from sales tax and our bid tax. So again, that's where we are right now, and it does lay heavy on my mind, as you can tell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
From Lillian Fox again. Go ahead, Lillian. Go ahead, Lillian.
Yeah, I'm a retired earth science teacher, and I think one of the problems about the lawns is people don't realize that a lawn takes more water than a swimming pool does. I think if you published every year how much water each of those golf courses requires, then I think the golf courses would be inclined to use the best technology they could to reduce their own water use. Keep it nice, keep it workable, but get their own water use down. I think that would also make the public less inclined to insist on quite as much green because there are some places where you got to have a lawn, but not the whole golf course. And just publicizing how much water's involved would help motivate the golf courses and help people understand it really is a lot of water.
And you know, that is some info, that's information that you can get. Uh, if you submit, submit a foyer request, uh, to your town, or your city, rather, you can get that information, and you can certainly get it, um, from Oral Valley by the same process. And believe it or not, a lot of people in our town, because of the controversy of the golf courses, do keep track of that. And we do, as a part of, um, of our, um, council meetings, particularly quarterly, we do have those reports.
Oh, good. Very good.
All right. Um, I've got a question for you. I noticed that the, uh, La Posada Senior Living Campus announced that they're going to restart development.
Yes.
Is this part of a general effort to make, uh, Oral Valley a, a destination for people who are hoping, looking to retire?
Yes, they are. Um, we're not real sure how soon that's going to occur. Uh, they started out, um, Nicole Myskies was the original name of that project, and now they are back as La Posada. Because that property and that land has already been entitled, there's no modifications that this council can make on that right now, but, um, I'm just interested in when they're going to resume building out that property. Because it's, it's been a cost to the town, uh, to try to maintain it, you know, uh, after they walked away from it.
Okay. Well, we're right near one o'clock, Joyce. Uh, we don't have any further questions at the moment, so I was wondering if you could, uh, help us conclude, uh, this meeting by telling us how we can support you, uh, how we can get ahold of you and, uh, basically continue the efforts that you've gotten underway.
Well, one of the things that I would like for us to do is to stay connected and to do, do our due diligence to make sure that the information that we are sharing with each other, that it's factual. We are going off the deep end and so much crazy madness that, um, I think holding facts out for truth, we've got to do. Um, and I will become a member of your organization. I'm very much interested because what impacts you all, of course, impacts us. Um, it's certainly been a pleasure to be here. You can certainly reach out to me at Jjones-Ivy, and that's J-Jones, O-N-E, J-O-N-E-S. So it's J-J-O-N-E-S hyphen I-V-E-Y at, um, OralValleyAZ.gov. And I appreciate the time being here, I appreciate you all listening, um, and I appreciate your taking an interest and being active in the community and also in the democratic process. And I, who was it that was going to give the email address for the educational, uh, council, the state level committee?
That was me, and I did put my email into the chat, but I will be happy to do that again.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll open the chat and I will get that because that is something I'm very, very committed to and interested in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Joyce. It's been a delight to have you, a Democrats of Greater Tucson. Um, we hope you'll join us for our happy hour on May 26th so that, uh, all of the good people of Democrats of Greater Tucson can get to know you better. And, uh, with that, I'm going to wrap up the program and say this is the end of this meeting, so thank you very much for coming.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Take care and have a terrific week.